Hi, everybody.
Hey, hello.
Hello.
What a gorgeous bit of rain we had yesterday, half an inch.
Oh, I know, it was nice. Maybe a little bit more sprinkles and then by Wednesday it will be over.
Yes.
As long as we don't have those hot days we had.
I agree. Well, that was, yeah, we've got to get through October yet, but.
So we have three of us, we need two more. Commissioner Murphy or Commissioner Savage, has anyone heard if they are not attending tonight?
Commissioner Savage is not attending tonight. Uh, he had a pre-planned trip before he joined the commission. I've not heard from Commissioner Murphy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at six o'clock, um, with that Commissioner Murphy, I don't think that would be able to approve the minutes for May 16th because I was absent that day. Um, but I think with three of us, we can probably move forward with the meeting, correct?
That is great.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Murphy? Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Savage? Vice Chair Hancock?
Yeah.
Chair Lemus?
Here.
Thank you very much. And then we'll move to approval of the minutes. So for the first meeting of May 16th, I was not here and with only two here, we're meant to move that to the next meeting.
Uh, okay.
But for the meeting of July 18th, I think there's enough of us here that we can approve it. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of July 18th and planning commission in Qatadi.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And then can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Thank you, and next item is have there been any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Chair Lemus.
Thank you very much. And what about oral or written communications? Is there any additional oral or written communications?
I'm not aware of any other, have you received any comments since the agenda was published?
No, I have not.
No additional oral or written communications have been received.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move into the matters at hand, the first one is a public hearing on the Wunnerf ordinance. Um, and there's a resolution for us to, to review. Uh, so staff, I think there's a presentation on that.
Yes, uh, thank you. Good evening, Chair Lemus and members of the commission. Um, we have here for you tonight, first item is consideration of a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to create Wunnerf standards to allow creation of Wunnerfs in new private development projects. And as you know, the, um, oh, next slide, please. It's rare to go here. Uh, as you know, the, the Wunnerf is a concept originally from the Netherlands where it's generally applied to, to public streets. Uh, this proposal, uh, is really concerned with the interior of, uh, private development projects, including multifamily and mixed horizontal mixed use developments. Um, to, uh, to kind of kick off our discussion here, I would like to just go over the definition of a Wunnerf as it's put forth in the current version of the, of the draft ordinance. Um, uh, defining a Wunnerf as an internal driveway with a development, within a development that's used as a multimodal, multi-use shared space where priority is given to pedestrians and bicycles. Motor vehicles are considered guests in a Wunnerf and as such are subject to traffic calming and reduce traffic or speed limits in order to force drivers to reduce travel speeds and drive with caution so that all users feel welcome and safe. Next slide, please. Background on this item, I know you, you've seen this before, um, the Wunnerf. Uh, back in May of last year, uh, the planning commission held a workshop looking at options to meet open space requirements in the multifamily objective design standards and the Wunnerf was one of those options. Uh, at your public meeting in June of last year, the commission voted to recommend the standards, including the Wunnerf to the city council. Uh, the city council, uh, held a public hearing in August last year to look at the design standards and, um, discuss the Wunnerf concept at length, uh, moving it on to the next meeting in September, next slide, please. They picked their discussion back up in September of last year and at that point, um, this is prior to my being here, but my understanding is that they liked the Wunnerf idea so much that they wanted to kind of carve it out of the objective design standards and have it as a standalone, uh, standard for multifamily projects. Uh, so, uh, in November, the planning commission held a public hearing on an ordinance devoted just to the Wunnerf standard and, uh, recommended that to the city council for approval. And when the council looked at that in December of last year, um, they had a number of, uh, suggestions for improvements and asked for certain revisions for a revised ordinance, which brings us here tonight. Next slide, please. So specifically the, the council direction, uh, from last year, um, there are three, three main, uh, takeaways. One was to define what an internal driveway is, uh, and require that all qualifying internal driveways inside of a development may be candidates for Wunnerf. Uh, the council also really wanted to remove the requirement for a minimum of 100 square feet of Wunnerf per dwelling unit, which is what appeared in the previous version of the ordinance. Uh, really removing that in favor of standards that would maximize the overall amount of Wunnerf space in any given new development that qualifies. And the council also is concerned to ensure that Wunnerfs are not placed on driveways that accommodate heavy motor vehicle traffic, uh, from a safety perspective. Okay, next slide, please. So just to review, and I know that you, you've looked at Wunnerfs before, so this is familiar territory, but just to, to go over the finer points or those kind of the highlights of a Wunnerf, there are four main elements that have been identified. One is visible entrances and that includes signage and other cues to the users of a Wunnerf that they've entered a special multimodal space. Uh, physical barriers are another important component, including landscaping and traffic calming within the driveway that, uh, basically slows motor vehicle traffic down to increase the safety and, um, pleasant, uh, aspects of the space. Uh, the space is a shared space, it's a continuous, uh, paved area without a continuous curb creating sidewalks so that it really creates kind of a level playing field for all users of the, the Wunnerf. And finally, it will nurse feature landscaping and street furniture as a way to improve the pedestrian experience. Next slide, please. So here you have an example that just illustrates some of that, uh, from an overhead view. You see this, this sample Wunnerf here, which is not to scale, but, um, it allows, shows a meandering travel way that slows down cars that are moving through the Wunnerf. Uh, landscaping elements, parking is included as traffic calming here, um, kind of creating those little meanders. Uh, street furniture and lighting are included. And you can see here how this Wunnerf really helps to create a series of outdoor living rooms, which is what the main goals of a Wunnerf. Next slide, please. It's another example, it was noted, uh, last year in presentations that the Wunnerf concept is still rather new for the United States and hasn't necessarily been implemented widely or, uh, particularly in the manner that you might see it in Europe. Here's, I believe this is Santa Monica and, um, you can see this is something approaching a Wunnerf, although it doesn't have the meanders. So, you know, it's sort of a straight ahead view for the car, so the traffic might be a little bit fast here. Okay, next slide. And then here's another example, conceptual drawing of a residential development proposed, um, within the United States. I'm not sure where. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so we're getting into the, the real substance here, so, uh, just, uh, following on the direction from the council uh, from December, um, here's some of the, the key revisions that we've included in this new draft of the ordinance. Uh, internal driveway is defined within the ordinance and, um, that is a private driveway accessway, driving aisle, street or alley within a single development that provides motor vehicular access to that development's structures, parking areas and/or other features or amenities. Uh, with, bridging from that definition, all internal driveways within multifamily or mixed use, uh, horizontal mixed use developments are candidates for Wunnerfs with the goal of maximizing the total amount of Wunnerf space within a given development. And again, that's to replace the, uh, minimum that we previously had of 100 square feet of Wunnerf per dwelling unit. Um, Wunnerfs would not be, uh, placed on driveways where there's heavy traffic and that's motor vehicle traffic. And that's defined as more than 100, 100 or more vehicle vehicular trips during the evening and afternoon, uh, peak hour. And Wunnerf should be designed, developments really should be designed to reduce the occurrence of those heavy traffic driveways um, and the opportunities for cut through traffic and to maximize the opportunities for Wunnerfs. So in this way, uh, the Wunnerf standards will really drive, uh, the layout of potential new projects. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, some of the other standards, these are, you know, from, uh, familiar from the previous version, there's a few little tweaks here, here and there that I'll mention. Um, the Wunnerfs, uh, will have a clear and distinctive entrance and exit with signage and change in pavement to indicate a new, uh, shared space uh, is being entered and traffic calming features. Um, each Wunnerf is required to have a transition zone, which is, uh, the zone for allowing vehicles to essentially slow down as they enter the Wunnerf, uh, to come to the speed limit of eight miles per hour. Uh, that transition zone would be 20 feet, uh, coming from, um, a standard street. An arterial with faster traffic, uh, would require a 60 foot transition zone. Uh, we have three arterials in, um, in Qatadi, the streets that are classified as arterials by the general plan, that's East Qatadi Avenue, Old Redwood Highway and Grammstein Highway, all of our other streets are, uh, non-artorials that are, um, collectors or local streets. Uh, Wunnerfs may be, may accommodate one-way or two-way motor vehicle traffic. Uh, they need to be placed in close proximity to the residential entries and common areas of the development. Uh, traffic calming measures should be placed no less than 100 feet apart along the Wunnerf and previously that was 160 feet. So, um, we're looking at placing those measures a little closer in order to further the goals of the Wunnerf to slow traffic down. Uh, the minimum length of a Wunnerf is 60 feet. Uh, the maximum length was previously stated, I believe at 300 feet. Um, we've eliminated that in this proposal, basically based on the idea that the design of the development and the Wunnerf will actually drive the allowable distance for a Wunnerf. There's a lot of things that need to be fit into a relatively small space. Um, these projects may not be particularly big to begin with and so, um, we're thinking that, um, the maximum length will sort of filter out what is safe and reasonable will filter out through the design process. Okay, next slide, please. Uh, some more standards, so the, the width of the Wunnerf may vary. Uh, at a minimum, the space for a vehicle, motor vehicle to pass through needs to be 13 feet. Um, and now we are in, including the idea that there also need to be passing bays so that vehicles can get by each other in the case of a two-way Wunnerf without requiring a really wide roadway. Wunnerfs will incorporate seating, landscaping, decorative pavement and other amenities along their full length and eliminate continuous curves. Uh, a new standard we're including here is that the seating should be provided at least every 100 feet along the Wunnerf. Bicycle parking will be provided per the code and the bicycle pedestrian plan. Uh, so parking is allowed for, for autos within the Wunnerf. Uh, we do have, uh, included a new requirement that that needs to be at least 35 feet or more from entrances to avoid potential conflicts with cars, other cars entering the, uh, the Wunnerf. And finally, and this is sort of the big one, that emergency vehicle access needs to be provided, uh, in every Wunnerf. And so, um, the design will be vetted by the fire marshal for each potential Wunnerf and, um, will need to be designed so that, uh, emergency vehicles, fire trucks can get in there. Next slide, please. Okay, uh, that brings me to our recommendation. The community development department recommends that the planning commission hold a public hearing and consider adoption of and consider adoption of a resolution recommending that the City Council introduce an ordinance that would allow for the development and regulation of Woonerfs as part of certain new private development projects. And then I'm available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Autumn. That was a lot of good information and a lot of clarifications, especially since we have been seeing this item come back in front of us a few times. So I'm going to open it up and see if there's any questions first from the commissioners. Okay, so let's go with Commissioner Moore.
So I just had a, just really one question. On page thirty-six, it says, it just goes over the speed limits. Is that the speed limit of the, like a standard speed limit? Or is it going to be like fifteen miles an hour? It's on G of page thirty-six. Do you see the speed limit or otherwise operate the vehicles as through?
So the speed limit would be eight miles per hour, and that would be posted. Yeah, so, and I believe because it's, you know, because it's private property, the enforcement, you know, would really be up to the management of the of the development. But we will require that the speed limit be posted.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. Thank you. And Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, hello, thank you. I'm very good to get this better view. I did do a lot of ground truthing with the last one and just how would it relate to what was on the ground. And so I've got a couple of questions that are on the practical level, I guess. So I'm just curious for the transition zone. There's a specification for twenty feet and then for arterials, which Old Redwood Highway or East Khatari, I think, are probably the big ones. But we've got a lot on East Khatari Avenue. Where do those figures come from of twenty feet and sixty feet?
Good question. So the, so the twenty feet would essentially allow a single vehicle to enter the Woonerf, slow down, and perhaps even come to a stop if there's, you know, a pedestrian or bicycle right in front of them, some sort of, you know, some obstacle, without their vehicle projecting back out into the street. With an arterial, that distance is sixty feet, that's three vehicles worth of stacking. So this is to allow the traffic entering the Woonerf to not interfere with the adjacent street and proper time to to slow down and come to that eight miles per hour before fully entering the the Woonerf space where pedestrians are going to feel safe. That is a distance that the city engineer has has approved. And we've seen that echoed in other sample ordinances and standards. Notably, the city of Anchorage, Alaska, which is one of the few cities in the United States that has a a Woonerf, Woonerf standards on the books.
Thank you. So, you know, one of the, one of the issues that I think comes up with this is just are we requiring there be more asphalt? I mean, it just seems like every time we go through some of these requirements, we end up with more, more asphalt. So, so that aspect of, you know, twenty feet, which seems reasonable coming in, but sixty feet, I I just think that's a fairly unreasonable number, particularly based on looking at what's on East Khatari Avenue right now. So I I don't know how to like this, but, you know, when we have a look at some of the the values that are already out there in greenway, well, I I guess just some of the ones. So anyway, I'm just flagging that. I want to figure out a way maybe to the commission to ask how do we, how do we think about this? The second aspect is, what do, out of what this ordinance is is proposing, where would we think it'd actually apply if the current, just to give ourselves an idea of what this would look like, but out of the current development that's already been done around Khatari? I'm thinking the Terry Way Circle, which has actually two loops in it. It has a, it's, it seems like it's a standard development, but it has a second loop at the back that is smaller. And it seems to fit very nicely into this. But is Materi Circle something that would have attracted this ordinance? And there's a whole bunch of other ones that I've also looked at in Khatari, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, so one thing we've realized as we've looked at these standards is that each project is going to be highly individual. So, you know, we, at least at this point, you know, any, any development that comes forward from this, you know, if this is adopted by the council, any multifamily or mixed-use development will be scrutinized for the inclusion of of Woonerf. And so, you know, a number of the projects that have been built over the years could have been candidates for the Woonerf and, you know, and and could perhaps accommodate a Woonerf within the the development. One of the limiting factors, of course, is that that minimum sixty-foot length of a Woonerf and that transition zone off of the street, be it twenty feet or sixty feet or, you know, whatever we end up with. We also need to make sure that the Woonerfs are placed near entrances to developments so that they are actually used by the residents. And then, of course, we have the emergency vehicle access as well to contend with. So all that is to say that with each, each given development, you know, we're going to be having to look at it with fresh eyes. As I mentioned earlier, too, one thing to keep in mind is that these standards will end up driving the design to a certain, certain extent. So when a developer comes to the city, you know, with a proposed project, you know, we will say we have this, we have these Woonerf standards, and this is what they require. We need you to look at your site plan in a way that you can accommodate the Woonerf to the extent possible, and our goal is to maximize that Woonerf space.
So, so, you know, just to, I mean, I, I know, I realize how the system works and appreciate there's some difficulty in in sort of, you know, in a, in a sense having a look at a retrofit, but Materi Circle seems to fit, the idea seems to fit the general concept of what this would be about. So it's generally, you know, what is this definition of a private driveway? There are a number of private lanes in Khatari, from Khatari Lane to Greenleaf Lane, I think. And even there's some other places that are defined as private lanes. So is Materi Circle, would that be considered? It's a self-contained development. It has this ideal sort of meanders. It has spaces that are there, but it doesn't have the sixty feet where you would come off the road. Would it, would it meet the condition? Is it a private road or is it a public road at this point?
I don't actually know if Materi Lane is a, it sounds like it's probably a private road.
Materi Circle.
Materi Circle is a private lane, private road.
Okay, so it's actually not marked out, which other places like Marsh Way is marked as a private. It's, it's very confusing getting out there, but it's, you know, the ground truthing of this is is amazing to look at. So would Materi Circle with its easy entrance and a a one-way? It seems to meet every condition of this except for the sixty-foot. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just asking. It doesn't meet the sixty-foot, I don't think, access off the road, but it's a very easy pull-off.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just to clarify on that, so, I mean, we haven't, staff hasn't done the analysis to see if it would be a candidate or not, but just to clarify on the sixty feet. So the idea is the first sixty feet of pavement as you enter the the development off of East Khatari would not be a Woonerf. The remainder of the whole circle could be if it met all the other criteria.
Right, so that could go there, but there's a thirty-five foot, there's a thirty-four, five foot, but no parking spaces start, which is really the beginning of the Woonerf. So where is sixty versus thirty-five? I mean, I'm just, I'm, I think thirty-five is a more realistic. I I just don't think this, without being a traffic engineer, but with with being an engineer, other type of engineering, you know, just looking at the way vehicles pull off, it just seems to be fairly excessive and requiring more, more pavement. But, you know, maybe in that flexibility there, if it's a flexible sixty feet, that could be interesting. I could certainly go out there again and measure it. I've got my measuring instrument out there, my rod, and and checked out some of the distances just to figure out if they are. I I think that's the extent of my questions on the detail. I definitely think it's very nice with the combination of 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 encouraging the developer to think of it and the pavement. So I like, I like those. But I'll have more of my other comments till later on, but those were the detailed questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And, you know, allowing, I think, the other commission to go forward helps to answer some of my questions because some of my questions were answered. But I also am thinking about what Neil just said about the entry, because when I saw the twenty-foot and the sixty-foot entrance, I also kind of had a question because I'm next to Materi Circle. And even mine, even though it's not as as big of a complex, it feels like it's not a sixty-foot entrance. And then there's, you know, some parking and housing and and the front of the houses. So, so I don't know if that, was there like an analysis made to determine sixty-foot entrance? Or is that something that can be further reviewed? It's just a question that I have on that. The other questions that I had, which were what he answered, were is about the maximum speed. And I really appreciate all the calming features that are, that help to kind of reduce the speed. But, and I learned today that it's eight miles per hour that wasn't in the report. And the other one I learned that you answered already for me was about that the Woonerfs are going to be generally required for multifamily and horizontal mixed units. So that answered my question in that area, too. So those are just some of the questions that I had about the sixty-foot and twenty-foot and how that decision was made. Is this something that's standard in other Woonerfs in other areas? So that's a question that I have. I don't know if there's an answer, if that's something we can look into.
Yeah, so the, so that standard, the twenty feet and the sixty feet, we, does appear in other, in other communities, in the United States, in their, in their ordinances. And, you know, one thing I I think is helpful to keep in mind, you know, and and you all know this, that, you know, the Woonerf in in Europe is going to be very different from the Woonerf in the United States. And, you know, the the concern that that we are trying to address with that transition zone is to address the reality that people may be driving pretty fast when they are turning off of an arterial or any other street. They need sufficient time to slow down so that it truly is safe. We don't want to create an environment where there's a false sense of security for the pedestrians within the Woonerf so that they can truly feel like they are truly safe. Another thing, I I just want to point out that the the thirty-five feet setback for parking is really a different, a different matter from the that transition zone. The the idea with the parking being set back thirty-five feet is to allow neck-down of the the Woonerf so that the curb kind of extends out into into the Woonerf a little bit. Typical, one of the, one of the design features that you see in a lot of Woonerfs is kind of neat is that as you enter the Woonerf, the curb extends out and there's landscaping. So it's it's narrower at its entrance than it might be further down into the interior of the Woonerf, and that acts to alert the drivers if they need to slow down and actually, in fact, makes them slow down. So we need to allow for that, that space as well and that traffic calming. Also, if vehicles attempting to park, you know, doing maneuvers to park themselves closer to the entrance, there's more opportunity for conflict. So that's kind of what we were thinking with that thirty-five feet.
Okay, okay. And Commissioner Moore, did you have another question?
I did. So just go back to like what Neil was saying on Materi Circle. Are we, my question is, are we doing this with single-family homes? Because that mostly is single-family homes in that complex or in that neighborhood. So I, I, I just wanted, this is multifamily, like condos and apartments, am I correct?
That's, that's correct. Yeah, this is.
So I know in the back of this, which he was talking about, there is some, some duplexes and things like that in the back of that property. But in the front of the property, there's all single-family homes. So my other question is, if we did do a mixed use of something like this, say, you know, single-family homes in the front and, you know, paying a multi-use, you know, condominiums in the back or, you know, some kind of, you know, hybrid. I mean, I, I know we we looked at something like this, actually, when we, long time ago, did, we're going to do a project on Old Redwood Highway. So anyways, I mean, just, just some, just throwing it out, kind of like, if we did do something mixed like that, would we look at a, at a Woonerf to kind of incorporate something? Or does it have to be one or the other?
Um, in terms of a multifamily versus a single-family development?
Well, I'm saying if it was both. So.
Oh, okay.
Materi Circle is both. When you go all the way in the back, there's another circle around in there that was incorporated that has multifamily in there. So I'm just saying, is it something that we could play with if we had some project like that?
Yeah, I would say so. And, you know, it might be something where, you know, the first portion of the the development closer to the street, adjacent to the single-family homes, would not be Woonerfized. But maybe further back into the development alongside the duplexes, you know, it would work better, that that would, that would be, we'd be able to fit those standards in there.
Awesome, thank you.
And now we have Vice Chair Hancock has a question.
Yes, well, to follow on a little bit from Lisa, just, I mean, what I'm reading by this is is that it's the, it's the definition of if there's a space for an internal driveway, isn't that what's controlling it? Not, I mean, kids that are from multifamily versus kids that are from single-family, they all bleed the same if they hit. So I, I mean, my view of or or being in Materi Circle is it actually is a Woonerf by its design. It's, and that works very well to provide circular access, slowing, vehicles can't move very fast because it is a circular access and, you know. So, so I I would, just by this definition of being an internal driveway and a private development, wouldn't it automatically attract this definition?
It certainly sounds like it might. Again, without having been out there myself to actually look at that development, it's difficult for me to say. But I would say yes, I mean, it sounds like it would if it's a private multifamily development. And, you know, there is the space.
So you use the word multifamily, though. Surely, and I'm just trying to look and where in this.
Oh, because it has a single-family component.
But why, why is it defined multifamily or or, I mean, it's, it's basically about trying to make it safer, whatever its configuration is.
Vice Chair Hancock, I think most single-family homes are served by public streets. And so it would depend on, I mean, there's no, this, to clarify, this ordinance is intended, as it's currently written and as we've been discussing it, to apply to multifamily developments and their private driveways or circulation aisles, not to apply to public streets. So I think there are some existing instances like Materi Circle, as you're pointing out, where it kind of is a blend of single-family and multifamily and maybe would fit the definition. But this ordinance is specifically going to live in the multifamily design standards. And that's been, I was framed and discussed the entire time. And I think it's mainly because of the way traditional single-family development is served, you know, through public streets.
So what we've got is a problem just with the code that this is where it's living at the moment because we have one definition for multifamily and one definition for another.
Well, I think it's also with the adopted public standards, public street standards. So we have, we have standards for how we build public streets in the city. And this does not fit anywhere nearer those, those adopted policies and standards. So it'll be a different conversation for the City Council to tell essentially us and the Public Works Department to amend the the city's street standards to create a Woonerf standard. And, and you can imagine trying to. you know, turn certain streets that are public into a Vernif or Wunnerf or even allow them to function as they do today as a Wunnerf, they don't, they don't accommodate circulation, which uh vehicular circulation, which public streets are primarily utilized in that way in traditional development patterns.
So so it's a good conversation, but I really want to challenge that we're after a safer environment. And so, you know, does do we as a planning commission just got to say, hey, look, this is configured for a multifamily, but really it should be for, I mean, there's Catati Lane, there's um other places that are single-family, there's Green Lane, Greenleaf Lane, there is a whole bunch already out there that I think are all private lanes. They need this definition. So so I mean, maybe this is just maybe it would automatically happen. I don't know. I mean, because these developments came up in the past and they have been a very nice development from the from the builders. So I I guess my major thing is in looking at this is we don't want to get in the way of anybody trying to do the right thing. I mean, you're bringing up and saying, hey, this isn't the way that normally something gets done, but I would hope that if a builder proposed it this way, that they could still do it.
Yeah, well, I so Greenleaf is a private street and it serves both single-family and multifamily. So and similar to Materi, so I think there's opportunities for these hybrid situations to occur. But uh that's a much larger conversation to talk about turning public infrastructure into Wunners.
Okay, so that's that's where the question is here. I mean, this is basically, this is looking at the smaller, what we think of as smaller, but we hope they're mixed use in in many ways here. Um, and this is the first stage really in applying it in our code.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Or Noah, is there such a definition as multi or mixed housing developments? Because that sounds like it's more like a mixed housing development. I don't know if that's a definition that we use.
Yeah, we we don't use that uh necessarily, but it is common. And I think we're likely to see this much more so as we move few into the future, which is the cost of real estate and cost of construction, where it is common to see kind of these hybrid developments where a portion of it are single-family homes, a portion of their multifamily homes. Frankly, there may even be some commercial involved depending on if there's larger streets that the project fronts on and what the zoning, uh how it's zoned. Um, so I do think uh Vice Chair Hancock's point is well taken and and we are likely to see that. And so um to your point or to the point, we do want to allow and accommodate Wunnerf-type uh infrastructure to be put in. And I think um, you know, Associate Planner Bus uh touched on this because um the direction of the policy, just living in the code, as we have these conversations with developers and they move for the project, we're going to point this out and we're say, look, you know, our planning commission, our city council have expectations that you look to maximize opportunities for Wunners to be built into your project design. And so we will be having those conversations and, I mean, a lot of folks have never even heard this word before, so I imagine having some really interesting conversations with developers. But I do think it will to the point kind of move the needle in the perspective and how the expectations are framed with regards to some really true multimodal development. So bicycles equals pedestrians equals automobiles.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you, everybody, for this real robust conversation. Uh, so we're going to go now to the public and see if there's any public comment on this uh topic.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raise hand icon to speak or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Um, just right now, um Noah Hush was talking about public streets, but what about, I'm just thinking, what is the definition of a private street? Um, I'm thinking of, for example, Marshway, which again seems to have a lot of the Wunnerf characteristics. And I believe it's officially a private street. So private streets with uh single-family homes in them, do they do they count? Because it's not public street and it's not a, it's not a multifamily housing. So that's my question about definitions. Thanks.
Um, that is, that is a good point. And as as things stand, you know, we have a definition of what qualifies for a Wunnerf, and it's this definition of an internal driveway. So we stepped away from defining a Wunnerf in terms of a street because we want to kind of create this this new this new concept of a shared multimodal environment. So we are defining what qualifies as a Wunnerf in this draft ordinance as being fully contained within private property. Okay, and then further being a a private driveway uh or an accessway or an aisle, basically anywhere where you might find a motor vehicle moving uh is is what we're calling a driveway. So in this case, that would not um, that would not necessarily uh preclude a street like Marshway from becoming a Wunnerf potentially. Uh, again, as you know, as we've stated, the design, the ultimate design of a development like that would probably be different when viewed through the lens of the code with these this proposed Wunnerf uh set of standards, you know, that that might be look different. It might not look like a typical uh single-family subdivision street.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. Do we have other public comment?
That will end public comment, Chair Lemus.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'll bring it back to the commissioners and see if there's any additional questions or clarifications um before uh we go to the resolution. And I did have a question about the resolution, but any commissioners have any questions? Uh, Vice Chair Hancock?
So I guess not so much a question, but just um pointing out that the internal driveway, reading it, a private driveway accessway, accessway, driving aisle, street or alley. Um, should that also include lane or a street a sufficient definition, um sufficiently inclusive definition um within that? A question, I guess, to staff. This would be on section seven.
You can believe it, I haven't committed it to memory.
Well, very much appreciate all of the the redlining on here. Very much helped to.
It's a lot of red. Good. Um. Yes, I mean, I I was viewing that as fairly comprehensive, but if we, if if the word adding the word lane is going to help us further uh zero in on what we're talking about, then that makes sense.
The other question on that, maybe I should have brought up earlier, there's a reference to the speed limit applying to, I think, um uh bicycles and motor vehicles. And I'm just wondering whether or not we shouldn't be putting in there any wheeled vehicle slash motor vehicle. Because there are people who have got um everything from scooters to other things. There are sort of a bit more of an inclusive definition in these areas of essentially, please mind that it's could be pedestrians in there when you're skating along.
That's an excellent uh suggestion, especially in terms of the um, you know, the scooter, the motorized scooters and bikes that we're starting to see around town. So yeah, skateboards, scooters, rollerbladers. Okay, so we can, yeah, that's a good change. Can add that.
Thank you. I had my first first experience on a line scooter in San Francisco this weekend, so that was exciting. So um, any other questions? Okay, so then we'll move on to the resolution, but I just had a question for staff. The title was under twice. Am I, is, should it be there twice or just once?
It should be there once. I'm not sure what happened there, but yes, we'll remove that.
Could I, could I make a resolution, a motion with some changes for the planning commission to consider?
What changes?
So the, it would be um adding that word lane section seven, adding that we would have um all wheel devices instead of bicycles. And I think that um they should, they're sending it back for consideration on the sixty foot. Can they be?
I don't agree on the sixty foot. I'm not going to sign off on that one. I think sixty, twenty and sixty feet, when you go into a to a Wunnerf that has kids and that needs to slow down, I think that's, I I actually would like more because I think when people now come into driveways, they come in fairly fast. And I see it in Oliver's all the time, people turning off into to to go into a driveway and they're coming off East Catati and they're going fairly fast to turn in. So I I I like the idea of having twenty feet or sixty feet buffer before you hit that Wunnerf. Because there's going to be people sitting, going to be people on bikes, going to be people, you know, kids. I think if you make it any shorter and you have people just turning in fairly quickly, then there's going to be a problem. So that's my.
Right. Can I, can I just make an input? I didn't want to make it earlier. I mean, I think it was Weaver identified last time of that we're making more allowances for drivers and stuff. What the sixty feet is actually doing is allowing people to speed in there faster. That it actually, if the, if people, I mean, people coming off the road with the dip, they have to slow down. But by requiring sixty feet before they hit, before they, the wrong word, but before they have to take into account a um a Wunnerf-like feature or a uh Chicani, that was a nice word that was actually being used, a new one for me. But so I think the logic is is reversed, practically, you know, honestly, that we're making more allowances for drivers and that actually what what would be better is is the driver comes in and they've got to see that if they don't adapt straight away, you know, they're going too fast. So I think the logic is inverted.
So what if they don't adapt right away?
Then they'll hit something. They'll hit a piece of concrete. That's what you actually have in there is is that they are going to look at something and say, if I don't adjust my driving, and people learn stuff. I mean, you see this with Old Redwood Highway with the new structure and Highway one one six, the way that they were very hesitant to begin with, and then actually learned to speed up in there. But people will say, hey, I'm coming in here and boy, I've got this little extra space to speed in, and that's a space that could be kids, kids could be playing in because it's available and there isn't a car in there, there isn't a vehicle in there ninety-nine percent of the time. And I mean, I think this is a a driveway, not an access like Oliver's parking area where you've got a a fair amount of space. But in all of these, we have this dip that goes down, and then often there's this steep up, which is designed that if vehicles hit that too fast, they'll be bumping their their back end. So everybody learns really to slow down on that. And by allowing sixty feet, we're again just giving drivers more permission to be fast. That's my opinion. My my observation, my observation about the space. So um it's it's a little bit reversed sometimes, you know, we're making more allowances all the time for compensating for drivers rather than saying, hey, let's put something at thirty feet, but give it a little bit of extra space because it is coming off a faster road. But they should be slowing down to get on that, which is good for the traffic. I mean, they're still supposed to be going at thirty miles an hour or thirty-five miles an hour. They slow down to put into something like Materi Circle and all the other circles off there, and then they've really got to slow down even more, which is not not that much. Um, so I I think we really, you know, it's far better to actually have a have a uh something that's a necking in the road or like a Materi Circle, it actually does a turn. I mean, I'd have to go and have a look at Materi Circle again to see if that meets the sixty feet. But it really is pretty nice. You should get out there on Materi Circle and just.
I helped design, I helped do that project, so I'm pretty aware of it and driven it quite a few times.
Right, or drive it. I mean, I'm I'm really impressed with it as that Wunnerf-like structure. And it's just, you know, that transition zone, I think, as it comes into a private property, needs to be short. Don't compensate for the fact that people are coming from a bigger road. It needs to be more exacting.
Well, uh commissioners and Autumn, what about uh what other options would there be? Like, is there intervals, like maybe not thirty-five or forty, but forty-five or something like that? That are there those type of intervals that we could consider? Or is that, is it a straight twenty or sixty?
Well, so the the twenty or sixty is is, you know, looking at the different types of roads. So it sounds like the concern is really the sixty feet for the arterial. Um, you know, we haven't explored shorter distances. That's you know, the the primary concern is really on safety for all users. Um, and uh, you know, including, you know, children who may or may not be able to keep themselves within the bounds of the Wunnerf. Um, you know, one, another thing I want to just point out again too is that the the distance is for slowing down, but it's also for stacking of the vehicles. We we do want to make sure that we don't end up with um cars entering the Wunnerf and coming to a stop and then having their bumpers, their rear bumper sticking out over the sidewalk or out into traffic that might be moving out along the arterial. So um so the distance is slowing down. It's also that that buffer zone for vehicular stacking to, you know, to avoid basically a collision.
And then the signage would start at the entrance of uh even before the sixty feet starts the transition.
The idea is that the signage is at the entrance, and then we have, what's really important within a Wunnerf is the visual barrier. So the signage is one thing, you know, the the speed limit is one thing. They're meant to be designed physically to give drivers the impression that they do not have space to hit the accelerator and and drive quickly. And that was one of the issues with that, that slide, the picture I showed of of Santa Monica. You know, it's a straight shot. Uh, the idea is to have these meanders with visual barriers so that when a when a driver encounters the entrance to the Wunnerf, they look up ahead and they don't see the road the whole way. What they see is a projection of landscaping, seating, a parked car, you know, some distance out at thirty-five feet. Uh, something that that shows them you cannot accelerate, you have to continue slowing down. And so, you know, we we, the signage is just a part of it.
Okay.
Uh, it may be helpful if we include, so to your point though, maybe we need to include a standard that the signage precedes the Wunnerf a certain distance. So that.
Especially with the sixty foot, that would be safer, I think, especially with the sixty foot entrance. That way people would know what they're encountering.
Yeah, and some further cues, you know, we can help. Um, one thing that we, you know, we have happening in the Wunnerf is the transition to different pavement. And uh as a another visual cue. So it may be, you know, and and this is not something we have now, maybe what we need to say is that we're extending that requirement all the way out through the transition zone as a further cue to the drivers that they're entering a different space.
Well, thank you. I like that clarification. And if they, if if the planners would consider that, you know, in in the plan moving forward, I I would be fine with it.
So I, can I just bring up one of the the traffic issues? I mean, I think traffic arrives statistically. And so we have a really good feel for what that means, but certainly, you know, trying to design for having too many, you know, the worst case, that's what's ended up with giving us all of this extra asphalt, which is is extra expense and is bad for the environment and all the runoff and stuff. And it and it's this very tentative idea that maybe would prevent a fender bender. But practically speaking, what happens is people speed into it. So, you know, they've got a little bit more. So anyway, just that's my thing. I mean, if 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 Lisa really feels strongly about us still, I mean, maybe you should make a a motion on that and um I I just would like it to be considered, that's all, you know, to go forward and ask, is that sixty feet? Three times twenty feet, so twenty feet is is per is per is is a car length. And while we're saying we have to design for three cars all getting across, you know, coming in and two cars seems an absolute maximum, but statistically seems to me one and a half cars. That's just you know, a engineering approach to it. But I don't know, that's, if you still feel strongly, Lisa, about that, then I'll I'll.
I mean, I just, I know I lived on Marshway for a long time, for years. Thirteen years I've gone Marshway. And when there was no development there and only the apartments, and then there was development. And people do race in there. I mean, they turn in and and there was kids on either side playing on that street back and forth. So I've lived in two developments in Catati before we bought the house. So I I've seen the amount of traffic, in fact, that one of the best things actually was Kingston. In fact, that one of the best things actually was Kingston Way because you had to go up the hill and you had to go slower. Because it was up a hill and so, but you know, I mean, that's neither here nor there, but the other one wasn't kind of a straight shot off of East Catati. And people did kind of barrel through there. Believe me, there are many a times I sent to somebody to slow down because there's kids in here. So, you know, I I don't know the exact answer on that because there is no traffic coming on that street.
Marshway, you mean?
Yeah, Marshway.
There is a bridge, at the bridge, which is probably a hundred feet back. That is effectively, that's a change of payment pavement. I mean, it sort of works nicely marsh because you can't see it's an S curve. But there isn't that immediate indication that you're entering the zone. It's more a hundred foot back, I think. I I think I'm guessing at that, but it's definitely way back. Where suddenly the bridge changes with the pavement and it and it's more of a chicane, chicane's net style.
Yeah, and at and at that point, I mean, those were the newer houses that went in, the single family homes that went in there. So, you know, obviously was the change for the neighborhood, but the other places that are there for the apartments. And the the condos across the street that went in first that had lots of kids. And then, what I'm saying is that if there was traffic coming there, I mean, people, even when they came into. That thing, they they still sped up a little bit. They didn't slow down all the way. So I don't know what the answer is on, I mean, I think it is a question of how do you traffic calm? People coming in from something off the street and saying, hey, this is a neighborhood. Or you need to slow down, or we're having a wood nerf here and you need to calm yourself down because there's gonna be kids playing. You know, I don't know if it's more pavement or if it's less pavement. So, you know, I I've I've only seen wood nerfs in when I was traveling in Europe. And so I I don't know the answer, but.
The Materi Circle that you're involved in the design of.
But that's not a wood nerf. That's that's, I think that's a completely different thing. I think when you do Materi Circle. You're looking at single family homes in a big circle and then you're looking at at a at other um. Attached homes in the back, so I think.
That's the design, the design that you did of that circle effectively meets those definitions of wood nerfs irrespective of the people around it.
I I don't think it does. I think that it meets the public street standard for there and it is a public street. It's not a private street.
Well, we just said Damien, I I'm sorry, was I think it said it was a private street, it's uh.
Is Materi Way a private street or public street?
Materi is private, it's uh but it's it's appears to be developed to the public street standard, so I I. There's a lot here, I think, you know, um. You know, the recommendation could be that the council explore options for, you know, en- enhancing traffic calming. Uh, but I would say from the staff perspective, and we did get input from the Public Works Department on this. Uh, we would need a traffic engineer to provide specific direction less than sixty feet. Uh, and that was not included in our budget to get that type of input and pay that type of consult uh consultant fee. But however, the council obviously can um explore that option, ask that it to be explored or um. Professional input be provided.
If no, if we left it the same, the twenty and sixty and put a note in. For the council and said that this was a discussion for the planning commission that we had some issues around this. And that we vetted it out the best we could as a planning commission and we would like to have them explore this. Um, either the twenty or sixty feet. Can we do that?
Absolutely, that's the, you guys are making a recommendation to the council and that can absolutely be part of the recommendation.
Would that be something, Neil, that you'd be agreeable to, that we would just, you know?
I mean, I would say twenty feet and and this question, you know, what could the sixty feet, what is a reasonable value for that sixty feet? It's just the question here was sixty feet seems unreasonable, run reasonably long for going into a nerf. Just for all the reasons you identified, like on Marshway, that people speed into it, whereas if you got into Marshway. And just, you know, there was a necking or some sort of indication that, hey, you've got a one-way system at that point, which has been used all over. Some form of wood nerf um um sort of element. To actually get everybody to think, I just can't get into Marshway and then speed up till I get to the bridge. And then slow down or whatever, or then be more cautious. So that that is exactly what I was sort of thinking we should question with the sixty feet.
I would, I would agree with that. I would, I would sign on to that just to leave it in there, but also just put a something that we we went back and forth on it.
So who wants to make a recommendation with an edit or with a change amendment to the. To add lane as to the description and also a recommendation to further review the twenty sixty foot, mainly the sixty foot entrance.
Well, Neil already, you started, so.
Okay, I can, I can do it. So it's to put a motion forward to add lane to section seven. To actually uh change the the usage of um the speed limit. From bicycle to all-wheeled vehicles slash motor vehicle. And and then to add to the to the council. That there was a discussion about the sixty mile and that the sixty feet, uh was that really too much? So to make a recommendation for the current um ordinance with those two changes. And the one highlighting the discussion to the council, and maybe staff can. Do more in there with a bicycle engineer, please, not one of these speedy traffic engineers that.
Vice Chair, do we need to read the resolution kind of as it's listed and add on those additions? Or uh staff, is is that sufficient or do we need to read the resolution with the additions?
Uh, I don't know, do I?
From my perspective, the motion was very clear, uh and we do not need a full reading.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I could have done that, I'd have realized that. So the motion for discussion is what I'm putting forward.
All right, I'll second.
Second, okay. We have a first and a second. Uh, can we get a a vote, roll call vote?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you as well for all that work that's gone into it with all the very useful, the redlining. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for all the very good conversation, you know, that we kind of let it all out and just kind of discussed all the different questions that we had, even more above above what was listed here. Uh, so the next item that we have is the um a public hearing also in consideration of a resolution recommending. Uh, that the city council adopt an ordinance and amend the zoning code to facilitate local food production and urban agriculture.
Okay, thank you, that's me again. Um, so yes, we are looking again at, um, this is another repeat here. We're looking at urban agriculture again and potential changes to the uh to the zoning code. Next slide please. So as you know, this one has been around as well. Um, last fall, the um the city council directed the staff to to look at zoning code amendments and prepare um. Uh, an item for consideration related to urban agriculture, uh related to fulfillment of general plan goals. Uh, in March of this year, the staff uh prepared the proposed uh urban agriculture ordinance, version one. And brought that to the to the planning commission for consideration, which um you then recommended on to the city council for adoption. Uh, when the city council looked at the first version of this draft ordinance um. In March of of this year, uh they they found that there were a lot of pieces that did not work for them. And they asked the staff to prepare a workshop for the council to hear more community input and look at some different strategies to approach uh what Catati needs. Uh, that that workshop took place in uh June of this year and we got uh really a lot of public input at that meeting. We have many, many public comments, uh many speakers and a lot of good direction from the council, which I will go into in a moment. Next slide. Uh, before I get to what the council uh provided to us, I want to just go over what our current zoning. Uh, standards are that relate to urban agriculture. Uh, so as things stand right now, home gardens are permitted in all residential zones as an accessory use. Uh, commercial crop production, uh the land use is allowed with a use permit. In the rural residential district and that's really the kind of the extent of urban farming uh as things stand. Uh, produce stands, which are accessory to a crop production land use, are allowed with a use permit in the the RR district. And those can be up to four hundred square feet in size. Uh, they're still of a temporary nature. Uh, community gardens are allowed with a minor use permit in all of the residential districts and the open space and recreation or open space recreation district. Uh, up to twenty chickens are allowed per property in residential districts and those are allowed by right uh for non-commercial purposes. Uh, one can apply for a minor use permit to have over twenty chickens. And roosters are allowed only in the RR district and I promise we are not proposing to touch that. Okay, next slide please. So the council um uh had some very specific direction for us. Um, uh, the most important piece, I think, is the most salient piece is to develop a an alternative. To the crop production land use, kind of a complementary, smaller scale agriculture use that would be appropriate. That could be appro- appropriate in any residential district. Um, further, the council wanted to create standards to reduce the potential impacts on nearby residents from. Any agricultural use in the city and to increase the noticing to make sure that neighbors know what's going on when a permit is uh is required. And uh finally, the the council was very favorable towards. Uh, small-scale sales on from onsite agricultural operations, um and not just produce, but also eggs. And cottage foods prepared from produce made onsite, produced onsite. Okay, next slide please. Okay, so getting into the, how that translates into the provisions of this new version of the draft ordinance. Um, again, this this idea of a small-scale agricultural operation being allowed is is contained in the the draft ordinance. And we're calling it the market garden land use. Um, it would be permitted by right in all residential zoning districts. Uh, one of the primary concerns is noise and use of mechanical equipment, so we're proposing that. Any mechanical equipment that's used in the market garden uh uh operations would be residential scale only. And would be limited to certain hours and there is an exception that we're providing. Uh, potentially for three days a year for more equipment that would be for site preparation activities only. Um, the size of the operation would uh controlled, um set at a half acre for cultivation area. Within five foot and and keeping to five foot property line setbacks. Uh, dwelling unit would be required as a primary use on any site where a market garden was uh was happening. Uh, in addition to being able to grow produce for commercial purposes to transport off the site. Um, the council was favorable towards the idea of a an onsite garden stand. So that these market gardens would be able to sell produce um from their site um out of the public right away, you know, in their yard. Um, these garden stands would be really small, they'd be a hundred square feet maximum in size, something with table, umbrella, table and a pop-up. Um, they would be short-term, you know, two days a week, uh nine AM to seven PM. And they would need to be cleared completely off of, out of sight, out of the sight of the public, uh when they're not in operation. Uh, two parking spaces would be required for the operation of a garden stand, those could be uh on-street. Uh, as well as uh off-street, depending on the space that's that's available. Next slide. So in addition to creating this market garden use, uh we also looked at the crop production land use. Um, and uh are proposing to extend that beyond the RR, the rural residential zone. Uh, to be allowed in the residential very low zone and the open space recreation zones uh with a use permit, just like in the RR zone. Um, community-supported agriculture, CSA, would be allowed uh as part of the crop production. Use so that in addition to being allowed a produce stand. Uh, or sell proper, you know, sell produce off-site to restaurants or what have you, that member-supported agriculture. Uh, uh, community-supported agriculture would be allowed onsite with the crop production. Uh, garden stands and produce stands would be allowed to sell eggs and cottage foods in addition to produce. Uh, that would require removing the prohibition on commercial henkeeping, uh but the limit would remain twenty hens per property. Okay, next slide please. Uh, so we're also looking at community gardens as part of uh this this proposed ordinance. Uh, standards that would apply to community gardens would be that they would be permitted by right in all residential zones. Uh, and with a use permit in open space and recreation. And just like the market gardens, uh there would be a limitation to residential mechanical equipment only with limited hours. With the exception of um a few days for site preparation. The five-foot setbacks to the area of cultivation would also apply in a community garden setting. Um, an additional requirement or requirement would be soil analysis just to ensure that um we. That the community gardeners understand what's going on with the soil and whether there might be any toxics or contamination in the site. Uh, and finally, um and this is a really important provision, a management plan for each community garden would be required. Um, that would be on file with the city. And a contact person would be required to be kept up to date um and on file with the city. Uh, with contact information and that would be posted on the site uh for view of the public as well at the gardens. Okay, next slide please. Uh, the council was was also interested in some uh new requirements for urban agriculture activities that require planning permits. Uh, one is the planning permit fees would be reduced by fifty percent. From the standard for any urban agriculture use, so there'd be a price break essentially for uh urban ag uses that require a permit. Uh, the use permit would require a finding of compatibility with nearby residential uses. Again, this is meant to reduce impacts of uh urban ag uses on residential. Uh, and public hearing notices to property owners would be uh required in a six-hundred-foot radius rather than the standard five-hundred-foot. Uh, we propose some perfor- performance standards for urban agriculture to to further reduce potential impacts. Um, these standards state that urban agriculture ag uses, I'm getting a little tongue-tied. Agriculture is turning out to be a pretty long word for me tonight. Um, these urban ag uses should not affect the livability or appropriate development of adjacent properties in terms of noise. Water runoff, pesticide runoff, equipment operation, hours of operation. Odors, vermin, security or vehicular traffic. Uh, in addition, pesticides, herbicides, rodenticides and synthetic fertilizers are discouraged. And there's been a lot of interest in a prohibition of those, um, you know, use of those substances. Uh, unfortunately legally, we just really cannot prohibit their use on private property, but we are stating, you know, that that these use, you know, that they're discouraged. Water conservation practices would need to be followed at any urban ag operation and compost piles would need to be located at least twenty feet from adjacent dwellings. Next slide. So the the draft ordinance also takes in um Veranda Falletti Ranch, uh which is an important part of the city's support of urban agriculture activities. And so in order to operate Veranda Falletti Ranch as a demonstration farm with educational and community activities. Um, there need to be a few changes there. Uh, we're proposing sort of a two, two steps. One is to rezone the property. It's currently uh neighborhood low density. Uh, we're proposing to rezone to open space recreation, which is the the park's uh zoning designation. And to further amend the OSR zoning uh to allow some new land uses that would be allowed only with a use permit. Uh, and that would include agricultural accessory structures, animal keeping, crop production, uh plant nurseries. Artisan and craft product manufacturing, community gardens, meeting facilities, caretaker quarters. Farmers markets and produce stands. And this is not to say that all OSR properties would have all of these uses, but this would expand the university. Universe of potential uses within OSR, again, limited with a use permit with conditions. Limited with a use permit with conditions from the approving body. Okay, next slide please. Finally, the community development department has included some additional provisions within the draft ordinance. That we see as necessary to facilitate planning and development activities in the city. The first of these is to increase the allowable height of a residential accessory structure with five-foot setbacks from ten feet to twelve feet. So as things stand right now in the zoning code with residential accessory structures. A five-foot setback applies up to a height of a ten-foot structure. Beyond ten feet, up to the maximum of twelve feet, which is the maximum height. Those accessory structures must then meet, this is what's currently required, must then meet setbacks for the primary residence. Which get are typically in excess of five feet and can be up to twenty feet in some zones. So the staff's opinion is that that two-foot height difference does not necessarily warrant significantly larger setbacks. For structures of this type and that 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 two-foot provision. Or difference also confuses the issue in terms of interpretation and consistency within. Within the zoning code. So we're proposing sort of a cleanup here to extend that five-foot setback allowance to all the way up to a twelve-foot height. In a residential structure. Sorry, residential accessory structure. The second provision that we're that we're suggesting is to add a neighborhood meeting requirement for certain projects. And those would be those that are discretionary projects that require a tentative map. Or have a scope of development greater than one acre. And those projects would require a pre-application neighborhood meeting to ensure early community input. Into these these larger, more significant projects that may be more impactful. Those types of projects would also trigger a project sign requirement. That would be there'd be a project sign placed onsite for at least ten days prior to public hearings for such projects. So that there's additional opportunity for public notice of significant projects. Next slide please. And that brings us to our staff recommendation. It's recommended by the community development department that the planning commission hold a public hearing. And consider a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance. Amending the zoning code to facilitate local food production and urban agriculture. And with that, I'm available to take your questions.
Thank you Autumn again. And let's go to questions from the commissioners. Do any of the commissioners have questions on what was presented? Okay, well, we could advise Chair Hancock.
Just made it to there before Lisa, I guess I would have been happy to. Let her go first and and things, but I guess my sort of just to clarify and be clear, so for the. The new market garden. For anybody who was looking to be educated about plants, grow some plants. And sell some some crops, I mean, but crops is a very general word as I understand it, but they wanted to. Grow some plants whether it be tomatoes or some herbs or anything and then wanted to explore how to be. Innovative with it to trade and sell it to neighbors. It could be kids. That's usually what a lot of encouragement is for kids. That includes could include some chickens. They can in looking at at the zone, they can do that without really. Any, it's it's a permitted use. Including having the garden garden stand on all zones as the way I read it.
Yes, that is correct.
And that the expectation here, the definition is is that there's got to be a a primary property on there. So this is a secondary use. Essentially, it's going to be. Something that is a hobby for people, has to be classified in some way, well, they've got to have their main property. So. Just wondering what the thinking was to say that and and I agree, you know, we we do really want to be careful on noise. But why are we saying that they've now got to do it on a weekday rather than any three days of the year that they. Could could bring or stage this equipment to be there.
One of the the so the councils and a lot of the community members who spoke on on this topic. You know, one of the major concerns was noise from from big equipment. And so, you know, our reasoning is that. It is reasonable that there be some larger equipment on the property. Maybe one, two or three days out of the year to do, you know, tillage or what have you. That that needs to infringe as little as possible on the nearby residential uses. And so containing that to weekdays is seems reasonable, allowing people the quiet enjoyment of their property on the weekends. You know, that's that's really where that was coming from.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mark, go ahead.
I I have a couple of questions. One of them is. On page eighty-four where it's produce stands. You have, you can sell bottled water and packaged snacks, ten percent of the sales. So I think that's really getting away from the the. What this is all about. I I don't agree with that on the ten percent. I mean, that's just basically. You're having a a produce stand and then you're selling snacks and bottled water. Might as well just open up a grocery store in front of your house. Because really, bottom line, I don't know who's going to be, and this is another question, who's going to be. Going around and monitoring this because. What I see in my neighborhood is there's a lot of trees that are cut down over the weekends or during the week and. We don't really have somebody that comes out and does a lot of. You know, I mean, it's really after the fact or if a farm stand's been there for a week, then somebody calls in and says. Oh, there's been a farm stand for a week here. We should do something about it, but I don't see who's going to monitor this. I think we share an inspector with another city and they only come in a couple of days a week. So that's another one of my questions on this is the monitoring of it. And then, like you said, I I just don't agree with, I understand selling produce from your house or, you know. If you have something that you're selling that you've made, but buying snacks at Costco and bottled water and selling them at a. On the street doesn't be. You know. Doesn't feel right on this. So so some of my comments and also some of my questions, like you said, who's going to monitor these at some point?
We just addressed the the ten percent of, you know, things items produced not onsite. Currently, there is no standard in that regard for produce stands. So this is actually new. I mean, as 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 we read, as I read the order or the code now, a produce stand that's allowed. Actually doesn't even have a limitation like that. So this is attempting to insert some quality control over that. This is modeled on language that the county of Sonoma, that specific piece, that's that's language from the county of Sonoma. In terms of how they, you know, they ensure a certain standard of quality at their at produce stands that are allowed within the county. I get the thinking here is to make sure that there is a standard that's actually on the books. That limits sales of those kinds of items, but it could be. An outright prohibition. That's also an option too. I think the idea is particularly with the produce stands, which can be up to four hundred square feet in size, you know, they have a little more floor area. It gives the opportunity for the proprietors to have some additional items that. Incidentally, might be of interest to people who are there at the produce stand primarily buying produce. Related to the monitoring, so like many code-related issues within the city, this would be. Really kind of incumbent on the neighbors to keep an eye on what's going on and and really sort of nuisance oriented. So it to the extent that one of these gardening or farming operations is not toeing the line. And they're creating a nuisance, then they would report that to the city and the city would follow up. With a code enforcement action.
And it looks like there's a another question from Vice Chair Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Well, partly to to follow up on Lisa, because I agree in principle with what she's saying, but with with some wording. And and I'm just, this is a question that we maybe can discuss later on, but just to get your input on it. Wording more that's appropriate, such as Girl Scout cookies or. Something else that is defining that limit first of all, the ten percent, but it could be, you know, an outright prohibition. But it could also be some other, somebody's done some some herbal oils that somebody else is is doing down the road. Would would that be, is there some language that we could use there? Do you think that would be more of a community? I'm thinking of, you know, that these these, when the table goes out, it's not strictly commercial. It's more of a community connector. Yes, there's a there's a a box that's there and and. You know, I mean, my neighbor did something, put something out, not knowing anything at all, but somebody walked off with this box. They sort of say just pay for it as as if you want to. And then the box walked off. It actually came back a day later on, so we don't know what was going on there, but. But something, something, since it's a community connector, I mean, I see it as a community connector. Could some other language be used? So that's my first question. That's just to follow up there. And then the second question really, which was. Sorry, for I forgot to ask this in previously was in terms of. Somebody who's graduating to a bigger sort of process and fits into the agricultural side. From the way I'm reading this, they would then apply for a per- a use permit. And the use permit is currently four thousand. Three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, I think, if I looked it up. So they would, they would then get half that value. So two questions in there for you.
Yeah, let me address your second question first. So yes, you are correct that the the fee would be cut in half. And one thing to keep in mind though is that say a person does want to sort of step up to that, the next level. And do crop production, which would have fewer constraints on the size of the operation. They would still need to be in the appropriate zone. So they would need to be in the residential very low. Or the rural residential zone. So this, that, the idea being that those large, that larger scale type of operation really wouldn't be suitable. In the more dense residential neighborhoods, especially because one is less likely to bump up into that half-acre size limitation. In those more dense neighborhoods. So and I'm and sorry, Commissioner Hancock. I I might have lost the thread on the the sales.
Well, then I'll then I'll just rephrase it again. Is there a more, so so given that we def- that we want to do either prohibition or the ten percent. Idea of just defining that there's a, this is not, this is a very, there might be something that's ex- extra. But it's really about the produce that comes from the land there. Is there more appropriate language that could be used suggesting more of a community? You could trade in community things like a Girl Scout cookies or, I mean, some, I guess it's very difficult overall. And it becomes a neighborhood monitoring thing of, you know, they're selling the wrong stuff there, but. So is there more appropriate language? I'm just thinking.
Well, yeah, I don't know, when it comes to commercial packaged products, which arguably the Girl Scout cookies are. It might be hard to thread the needle with the specific language related to that. It's possible though, we could think about that some more, but I I also wanted to point out that. You know, the cottage foods portion here is is important because. You know, that actually encompasses a fairly broad variety of prepared food products. They do need to be shelf-stable. They need to meet county restrictions related to production. So that it's basically not anything that's going to spoil and make someone sick or can be prepared badly and make someone sick. That could include a variety of items and the way that this draft ordinance is written. Those items can be made from produce produced on that site or at an adjacent property. So that would allow, say, a farmer to be out there with her tomatoes farmed in her little plot. And at her cut, at her little market stand or her garden stand also be selling her neighbor's lavender-scented honey. You know, or vinegar, what have you, right? So that there is sort of that that community aspect to it. As far as the the those commercial products. Again, as I say, I think it might be a little difficult to pin down exactly what would be community-supported and oriented. And what would not. I don't know if anybody else has any, if no, if you have thoughts of or other suggestions.
I think my and and Chair LeMis Kinnick. I think my thing on this was, I don't mind if neighbors, I mean, you have a farm stand and somebody, like you said, has honey. And somebody has eggs or whatever. That seems more appropriate to me anyways, is to to have a more of a communal thing. I'm just looking at, you know, I don't want to see somebody, like you said, going to Costco and doing a bunch of pre-made stuff. And, you know, selling it at the farm stand because I I feel like that's not the. What we're looking for. I think that's, you know, abusing that farm stand privilege to me. Girl Scout cookies, lemonade stands, I think you're always going to have that throughout the city at certain times. You know, in the summertime, the kids are off school, there's lemonade stands. At Girl Scout time, somebody puts a a table out in front of their house. There's going to be Girl Scout cookies. I think that's more of a, you know, seasonal hybrid thing that happens and. You know, it's not really on the intent of the farm stand idea is to be selling any of those products. But I do feel like that that's kind of one of those things that I I, when I go to a farm stand, I don't want to see things like that. I want to see produce and eggs and honey and and all the things that, you know, are local. You know, maybe Costco is local, but I don't want to see, you know, bagel bites from there or something, you know, like I. I think that's not the intent of of what we're looking for. So. You know, I I don't know if I'm a, if that's just a recommendation I that I put for the council. But it seems that that's not the intent of the law of what we what we want. So. And that's my two cents.
So Autumn, if I can go ahead and add that I support what both of the commissioners are saying. And especially that ten percent of additional items, I I feel that the bottled water, especially plastic bottled water. You know, plastic bottles are really not something we want kind of out there in the bill that the people can just kind of drop everywhere, you know. I'm not saying they will, but I'm hoping that a lot of the garden stands have like garbage cans or or something nearby. And even the packaged products, there's plastic paper associated with that or plastic wrap. That we want to make sure that that's kind of self-contained with the market stands as well, if if we go that route. But but I also agree and even the the county, they don't allow us to buy plastic water bottles. You know, we can buy the individual plastic water bottles, we're not allowed. We can buy the big old containers and import it among ourselves or order it from like. Crystal Geysers, one of those big bottles, but. But I know that we even have restrictions as county employees on buying bottled water for the office, you know, at the individual size. So that's just, that's a concern that I have, kind of the sustainability part of it. And as far as the the pesticides that you were mentioning, I don't know if in a management plan, if that could be noted, whether they use pesticides or not. Because I know you said it's legal that they can do it, but can it be noted as part of the management plan that they submit to the city? Whether they use pesticides or not, and also if it's organic or not organic, because that also is a good indicator.
So that that management plan is, that would be applied to community gardens. Not the market garden or crop production land uses. And we could include that as part of the management plan. Definitely, that's a provision that could be included. And as well as organic status or not, but again, that as it stands right now, this is proposed to be for community gardens. I do think that, you know, to the extent that a market garden or crop production land use is is operating organically and not using sprays. They would definitely use that as an advertising point. So they would certainly let people know about that. The other thing that I want to point out about the pesticide use is that because that is regulated at the state level. And the the state holds that tightly, they do not. um, and the the state holds that tightly, they do not want local governments to take over that regulation function. Um, they do pass the um, a piece of it to the county. And so the county ag commissioner's office has this role that any agricultural operation needs to apply for, they don't apply for, they file like a pesticide use um, certificate or permit, not, it's not a permit, it's like a certificate, it's a statement of use with the county. So that, you know, there is a process where there's notification uh, to a public agency that they're going to be using pesticides, what kind, when the application occurs, um, how they're applying it, and they need to make sure that it's being applied in the method that's allowed by the state. Which may not translate to what we would consider to be a good idea, but there is that mechanism.
So I think anything that we could do to add into either a management plan or even our crop or anything uh in there that, just so that the consumers know, you know, or the consumers can, if if that's something that's really important to them, because I know what you can say organic, non-organic, that really says a lot, but I think even just, um, if it's part of the permitting process that we can, or the plan process. And another question that I had was related to the days of the week. The market gardens can operate two days a week. Is there a way that people select that or that, is there like a standard for that? Like they have like certain days of the week that they operate? Or can they just pretty much pick whatever days of the week that they would like?
Uh, the idea is that they they would choose and it would be up to them. Yeah, we would just need to ensure that they weren't actually open for operation more than two days out of the week.
So there would be some type of monitoring to make sure they're not going over two days a week or something?
Well, again, that would be, that would be whether there was a nuisance or an impact that was being created that the the neighbors were noticing and that they would then, uh, you know, could report that to the city for enforcement action.
Okay, so those are the questions that a lot of the others were already answered, but I see Commissioner Moore has a question.
Oh, so on that, um, on that line of thinking, so say somebody, this is a permitted use, so you're there three to four days a week. Um, you're not getting your use permit pulled, is so does the city just come out and say you can't do that or, I mean, how does that work?
I can take this one. So yeah, uh, as um Social Planner Bus identified, you know, we, our code enforcement process is one hundred, well, nearly one hundred percent complaint-driven here in Khatari, and we're small staff. Our code enforcement officer is a contract employee. Um, so we are primarily complaint-driven. That being said, if city staff notices a violation, we usually will engage and um, work with those property owners to resolve and and refer to code enforcement if needed. Um, and in that's, in this situation, we would engage with them and we would have the ability to write citations to them, similar to parking tickets. Uh, so that way we could get very quick responsiveness. Uh, and if people, um, in in our experience, if people are resistant to uh, complying, then we have what's called an administrative hearing process. We have a neutral third-party attorney who comes in and acts essentially as a judge, or we present our side, they present their side. And then the city gets a judgment oftentimes, because we only do that if we have documented consistent violations. And then that judgment can actually be leaned on folks' property uh as an enforcement tool. Generally, we don't go there, um and we don't have to go there because these kind of ratcheted up enforcement mechanisms generally are successful in getting compliance. But I will say, to your point, Commissioner Moore, um, Khatari has not always had that. We've only had that since about two thousand nineteen. We updated the enforcement code to allow this mechanism, and so I know historically it's been a struggle to really get effective enforcement here in town on certain issues. And I would say we have uh, made a much more robust process in the last few years.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I I I think that was my only question, and I wanted to say something about Sylvia's the comments about sustainability. I'm right there with her on this. I mean, um, the less plastic, the less um packaging we have, the um, you know, obviously, you know, three streams at every, you know, farm stand would be my cup of tea, you know, compost recycling and and garbage and and to make sure that those are are done properly. So, um you know, I don't see any of that in any of this. And I know we do it for housing and we do it for everything else, but I don't see it in any, o- other than that you can't have a compost an outdoor compost outside more than twenty feet away from an adjacent property. But I think in farm stands, I think it makes sense that, you know, you wanted to be as sustainable as possible and you wanted to be, as you said, as um, nuisance-free for the neighbors.
Thank you. Then we'll go to Vice Chair Hancock.
Yes, sorry for extra questions on this, but the sustainability side I think is is very valuable. And I mean, it's it's just that's a I I'm seeing this really as a lot of it's about um, getting community engaged um and at the different levels. So it is, and I find I do have to sometimes train, I have a rental on the side and sometimes training people as to what is compost and other things like that. It's just amazing sometimes what that's going on there. But so so, but on that, I mean, the the sustainable side, I was re- looking through this again, we've got two days that we're lying to sell, but if you pick some zucchinis, how long do they last? I mean, if you've got two days and then you you've got it open and then the the um, you know, you pick your zucchinis, now you've got to wait five days before you can actually put them out there. The same with tomatoes. I mean, I'm usually eating my tomatoes within a couple of days. Um, pumpkins definitely last longer, so, you know, do we have a sustainability issue with two days a week? Would it, I mean, it's fair to say we need to have that stall removed. That's the whole purpose, that it be temporary on some day, but would it be better to say that it's it's got to be removed at these two days a week for when there's a lot of produce around? I mean, otherwise you can end up with putting stuff out there and then it doesn't sell, and now what are you going to do with that? I mean, that is a farming issue. But um, so is there, is, maybe this is a discussion later on. I mean, for the council, for the, for the planning commission to actually do, is two days appropriate for having the stall out there? Um, technically, it's really only on the seasonal basis. When you have a lot of produce coming in, you suddenly want to share it, but um so anyway, sustainability issue on that, but I I don't know whether there's anything that the staff can add, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I don't know if staff has anything to add, otherwise we'll go to public comment.
You know, I just, I just want to, um, you know, to really emphasize again that one of the primary concerns that we heard related to urban agriculture activities was um, was impacts on residences. And so the the thinking with the two days a week is um, just to 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 really kind of create more of a container to to minimize the impacts on nearby residences. And I, and I will say, I I didn't make up the two days myself. I I stole it from Sacramento. Um, their, their um, their standards for urban agriculture uses, which are, you know, usually held up as a, as a great standard in a lot of ways, was also two days. Um, so, you know, but that's certainly something we could, um, you know, mention in our report to the council that there that that, you know, there was some interest in whether that actually served the proper, you know, the timely moving along of fresh produce.
You know, that that also might create gardening relationships in a community, you know, where maybe one neighbor has it, you know, on one day and another day has it on two days later, so they can kind of share uh, the time, you know, and if someone has a zucchini that they didn't sell, maybe their neighbor is willing to sell it for them. So it'd be a good way of kind of building those kind of relationships too. Um, just a thought. Um, okay, so let's go to public comment. Uh, is anyone from the public?
To our attendees tonight, please use the raise hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to just completely agree with everything that Lisa and Sylvia, all of you actually said about the um, water bottles and snacks. That really seemed very counterproductive to what this is about. Um, and I, I would support the idea of it just being cottage foods grown on that land or adjacent land um, and in, and also avoiding things like plastic water bottles and and snack, snack wrappers, like as you said. Um, I'm all for organic farming and trying to keep everything as organic as possible, but I do have a concern because I know that it's very uh expensive and time-consuming to get official organic certification and that many people who do farm organically um, may not be able to afford that, especially when they're just starting up. So I'm a little bit concerned about whether defining something as organic means that they have to get the official um, organic certification or whether they can just state that they don't use um, chemical sprays and pesticides and that kind of thing. Um, the other thing I was, I was, I was concerned that this is supposed to be about facilitating local food food production. And I'm wondering how many people who would actually be wanting to do market gardening or um, have a community garden in Khatari have been consulted about what works for them. Because it seems to me it's very restrictive, things like saying two days a week for something or three days a week for something or nine AM to five PM. Um, this is only something at a hobby level. I imagine a lot of people who want to try this may be working full-time from nine to five, you know, five days a week and only able to get out and work before that or after that or at weekends or um, it just seems very restrictive to me. Also, the half an acre for the market gardening. Um, and I don't really understand why the farm stand has to be put out of sight. It seems it seems from a realistic point of view, also, I was thinking about um, keeping produce fresh. You know, if you're selling eggs, you want to sell them while they're fresh. If you're selling lettuce, say, you need to sell it while it's fresh. And if you don't, you're going to incur a lot more costs with refrigeration and cooling and storing until the next day you can put out the farm stand. And then if you can only put out the farm stand, say, on Tuesday and Friday, does that mean those are the two days you harvest your crops and clean them and put them out for sale and do everything on those two days? Um, it just seems to make it very difficult, I think. Um, but I would really like to have heard more about it from the people who propose to be doing this. If if, you know, if there are any. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? No other commenters, staff?
No other comments, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you. And Autumn, just kind of based on the last question, um, you had mentioned earlier, you were, you were going to share it. You got a lot of input from the public on this one. Um, can, can you share some of those kind of comments that you received? Were they all incorporated or or was there just a variety of comments that you received that you could maybe share with the top comments?
So, so as, you know, so as, as you know, this has been um, a a bit of an involved process. So we are bringing this, you know, this very revised ordinance forward. At this time, you know, the previous version of the ordinance was quite different and um, you know, farther reaching in some ways, um, but but less so in other ways. It was really focused just on the RR and the RBL zones, particularly without looking at other residential districts. And there were a number of concerns from the council members and from a number of members of the public about um, those potential impacts. Um, there was also a lot of support and people saying uh, we would really like to see this allowed, we'd like to see more urban ag allowed in the other residential districts. So it was really, you know, kind of both sides of, um, you know, of the coin, really. And um, when we, when the city council had its public workshop in June, uh, it was really very much the same, you know, a lot of, and this was, you know, a lot of these ideas came out during that workshop. But there were really a lot of concerns about um, the impacts, uh, a lot of concerns about visual and noise impacts. Um, and then a number of people who came out and said, I'm, I'm a small farmer and uh, I would like to see this go further. So we're trying to kind of meet both, you know, trying to kind of find something that's sort of the sweet spot that's going to work for Khatari that that meets all of those, those competing and varied interests. And um, you know, there seem to be a lot of support, though, for this idea of these small-scale um, gardens and small-scale garden stands. You know, generally, there's a lot of support for the idea of being able to set your produce out there in front of your house and um, and be able to sell it. Uh, so, you know, we think that the interest is there.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the commission before I make a resolution, just to make sure there's no other clarifying questions or uh, comments you had before we go to asking if someone wants to make a resolution on this one.
Sylvia, I just, I just have one other, I had one other question. So, so you have a farm stand and you have produce there and you sell it to somebody and they get sick. Um, maybe there's something, you know, they haven't washed the produce properly or something like that. How does that work? Because I mean, I've just never, I mean, I used to, you know, Oliver's has certain standards. Um, going to the grocery store, you know, there's certain standards when you buy produce there. Um, I know that it's washed and and, you know, held to a, I guess, a little higher standard than a farm stand. So how how does that work? I just have a question on that.
Yeah, so the um, the state of California has uh, standards that are, that are applied to, they call them community food producers. And those would be, so those standards would be applicable to kind of this, this set of people who are, who are working at this small scale. And, you know, those standards include, you know, how the produce should be handled, um, you know, cleaning, uh, presentation, uh, what have you. So there are those standards out there that, you know, we would expect anyone who's actually attempting to be in business selling their produce, that they would be meeting those standards.
But it's not in our ordinance.
No, and those, those standards, they translate down to enforcement at the county ag commissioners level. Yeah, we, we could, I think it would be entirely possible. So we do actually, when we talk about the cottage foods, we do specifically reference the cottage food law. We could include a reference here in addition to meeting the standards of the community food producers uh, law as well.
I think that would be good. I think people just starting out and that don't really understand. I don't, I don't really understand, you know, what all the standards are. Um, I, 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 I had one other question too. I mean, so you're selling produce from the, from your house a couple of days a week. Um, obviously taking cash in, and does that create a whole thing of a business license in town? Or, I mean, uh, once you start to get into this thing where you're now um, a merchant, basically, and you're selling produce, I mean, somebody could be doing this two days a week for all year long. How does that work?
They need to have a business license.
Okay, so I wouldn't know that that either. I mean, that's not in our or, I mean, all this stuff that is basically like, kind of like, if I'm a new person doing this, and I looked at this ordinance, I would think that, oh, I can just set up shop right now and not really have a lot of anything I had to do. So I think maybe I, those things need to be kind of vetted out a little bit. Like if you're going to do this, these are the steps. Or this is what we expect, or I don't know. This seems like, for me, as a, as a layperson who's not a farmer and I, I should say I am a farmer because I always have a garden and I always have things in my garden that I give away, but I don't I wouldn't know any of those things. Anyways, it's just a comment on that, because
That's, that's great. Actually, those are, that's a really excellent point. And what we're envisioning, you know, at the staff level, is that if this um, if this ordinance is adopted, that we would develop an information piece that would be available to the public, and we put it on the website. We would disseminate it to the public and whatever other avenues are available to us. And this would actually be true of the Woonerf as well, that, you know, we would have a how-to information piece that says, you know, so you want to engage in urban ag in Khatari, here's what you need to know. Um, you know, the same with, oh, so you want to develop a project in Khatari, let us tell you about the basics of the Woonerf requirements. You know, if those are adopted. So that, you know, that would think would be incumbent on the city to make sure that that public education piece happened as a follow-up. Um, the other thing is that just because a use is allowed Um, the other thing is that just because a use is allowed by right in the zoning code doesn't mean that um the person engaging in that use, doesn't mean that they just get to do whatever they want, but they're actually required to come in and and get zoning clearance from the city. So in a perfect world, they would come in and talk to us and find out what the requirements are. And then we would be able to say, okay, these are our urban agriculture standards, here's your performance standards, and by the way, you need a business license. Um, we don't necessarily have a mechanism to proactively take that out into the community. Uh, it it kind of dovetails with what Director House was saying about the code enforcement. You know, we don't, we don't have that proactive mechanism, but that is actually the way that it's supposed to work, that anybody engaging in uh a use of land needs to be checking in with the planning department and be told what the rules are.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Chair Hancock?
Yeah, I mean, just to, I went I went to all the different group uh meetings that were happening on there. And I mean, I I coming up through business, I mean, and and, you know, being trained in schools to begin with and stuff. Um, I mean, one of the issues is that it's not, it's very difficult to think of something and just get it perfect right from the beginning. So I I certainly see, you know, we're working at the community side of things around the neighborhood. And one of the things that really works well is just to be on the street doing some weeding and doing some other things and you get talking to people. So so the aspect of having a stall really provides that um, you know, um a method for people to be out there maybe and doing something, it's the same as a lemonade stand and people doing doing things like that. I mean, I see that as a basic driver. And I mean, there is this other aspect of what is public health? And I mean, I've been talking to lots of people about it. And I mean, you try and get good cheese around here and it's impossible. I mean, it's either so expensive and looking at some of the history that I've been to to places with that who've had cheese production for, you know, a thousand years, it 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 that's the very, I mean, it's a very dicey thing, but California has absolutely stamped down on any small producers because the cost of doing it, so that you're absolutely clear that nobody is going to get something, you know, will be able to complain about it, i- is the way the system is right now. So I think we, you know, if you have some dirty vegetables, then people who are buying it are going to look at it and say, should I, you know, I like buying it from that kid, but should I really be having this or should I be scrubbing it well? Um, I I do think, you know, there's an evolution, though, in that, that somebody's out there selling some vegetables and somebody's saying, well, have you cleaned them? How do I know I'm not going to get sick about from this? So so it's this community aspect that it allows. I think that's really where I'm seeing the bene- a big benefit is. I mean, yes, on on paper, we have a lot of these rules. And I think as somebody, if it's a kid who's moving into it and trying it for a couple of years, well, are we really going to require somebody who's 10 years old to come up with a license? But if it's somebody who is trying something, you know, to go to the half acre or so, then yes, they should be looking at a license. And that's that's the evolution of business in the city and, you know, do you really want to do business, you know, type thing? So you've you've got to fit into the requirement. So that's that would be just my take on it. How do we facilitate something? It's not necessarily going to be perfect upfront, but if there's a lot of takers on it, then maybe there could be some discussion. I'm sure around Qatari, there'd be discussion and some requirement. If there's only a few people who really pick up on it, do we really want to spend the time just making it, you know, making something that we might then have to come back and rework later on? So so that's where I would say, you know, there's a benefit in making it flexible where we didn't have it before, have this process in place. I I do think it's very restrictive in some ways. I went around to those meetings and all I can say is I heard a United States of fear out there, you know, there's like all these things that could go wrong. But how do you cultivate a little bit of people learning how to do it right? So, I mean, I I sort of supported where it is. I'm a little bit like, some of the bits are restrictive. I do think we'd be a benefit to flag to the council, can we make the times? We want to keep it so people have to take it off the road periodically. It's not permanent, but is two days the right number? I mean, I'd like to raise that and forward, but anyway, that's my.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So uh would someone like to make a motion, a resolution with changes? It sounds like there was a few things we wanted to look at, like a 10% um of additional items. And maybe looking at some of the times, I think that was something we wanted to recommend to the council.
I'd be happy unless I did the last one. I don't know whether Lisa wants to do this one or um, I think your 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 mic's off.
All right, I'll do a resolution. Um, I'll do the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Qatari recommending that the city council adopt amendments to Title 17 Land Use of the Qatari Municipal Code, Support Urban Agriculture by Amending Title 17 Land Use Sections 1722020, Allow Both Land Uses 1736050, Parking and Lodging Number of Parking Spaces 1742.040, In All Keeping 1742130, Outdoor Displays and Sales 1742160, Residential Accessories Units and Structures 176040, Application Preparation and Filing 1762030, Limited Term Permits 1788020, Notice of Hearing in um 1790020, Definitions Adding Section 1742.220, Community Gardens 1742230, Marketing Gardens um 1742240, Urban Agriculture Standards and Changing the Zoning of 175 West Sierra Avenue, the Veranda Floity Ranch property, Neighborhood Low Density, and L to Open Space Recreation OSR. Included in that would be the um elimination of the 10% and no water bottles. And what was the other thing Sylvia? I'm like, you know.
Changing the two days of looking at the two days. Um, I would say two days of no stall.
Yes, considering two days of market garden, whether that's the right days, two days a week, and also looking at um non pesticide pesticide versus pesticide use in the management plan?
So including those as discussions with planning commissioners, those two items to pass on to discussion for the city council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so um if staff is okay with that, then can we go to a roll call vote?
Did we, we had a second?
Oh, sorry.
I guess I'll second it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you for, again, another full discussion on this continuing item. Okay, so next item will go to reports by staff.
Uh, thank you, Chair Lemus. I just want to identify that uh city staff does anticipate the um draft housing element uh to be published for the 30-day public review, ideally this week. I think we're going to be able to get it out this week. Uh, so that's a big deal. We've been working on it for over a year, as you are all aware, and we do plan to present that to the sp- uh planning commission and the city council the week of uh October 10th. So we did get a quorum for the special meeting to be held on the 10th. We will, that'll be in place of our normal uh other two planning commission meetings, so we will consolidate those into one special meeting on the 10th. Uh, and we will pre-present the draft um housing element. It'll primarily just be a mechanism to raise awareness in the public, um because, you know, we've been working with the commission and council on on that document for a long time, but we really want to motivate and inform members of the public to let them know that that document is available during that time period. And we'll present it to the city council the very next day at their regular meeting on the 11th. So just be aware of that. And then briefly, I um staff occasionally sends out notifications for training opportunities. Uh, and I know there's a lot of interest in uh training participation by commissioners and it's, you know, as people are available, but a lot of it has to do with funding availability. And so staff has been discussing with the city manager, including an allocation for training uh planning commissioners into the community development uh training budget. Uh, and just so you know, where we've landed is, um, you know, we're not able to send all commissioners to like the APA conference, for example, uh but we would like to make that available to the commission. But one struggle that I've had is, you know, how do I notify the commissioners as a body of five individuals that training is available, but only for two of you, as an example? And so uh I was talking to the the city manager and he identified that, yes, the budget, he feels it would be appropriate to fund attendance of that conference, which is an excellent conference, um for two planning commissioners every year. Uh, however, you know, we need to figure out the hierarchy of how that will be allocated. And so what staff is proposing is to offer to the chair and the vice chair as a first come basis and then uh go down in the hierarchy of um seniority, basically on the commission, if the chair or the vice chair were not able to attend the conference. Um, just so you know, some background on APA, the conference usually um goes back and forth between Southern California and Northern California year over year. Uh, this this year it's in Anaheim. Uh, the the attendance to the conference is usually about $500. They do offer somewhat of a discount to commissioners. Um, and then the the increased cost is typically associated with the travel and then the uh lodging and and meals while you're in that remote destination. Sometimes it's going to be more expensive, like if it's in Southern California, sometimes it will be less, like if it was in San Francisco one year, it's been in Sacramento. But just want to provide that uh background, because I you you get emails from me and and I don't always have a response if multiple people want to go. And I've been trying to figure out a way to effectively budget for that. And so if the commission is supportive, staff plans to incorporate uh adequate budget for two individuals, uh commissioners to attend the APA conference every year, um offering it to the chair and the vice chair with first priority and then uh secondary priority would be um to commissioners based on their um years of service on the commission.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the next step is reports by commission. Our commissioners have any reports? The only thing that I want to just bring up is just, oh, go ahead, uh Vice Chair Hancock.
Oh, you could go ahead if you wanted to.
I was just going to just recognize that it's uh Lat- Latino Heritage Month. And so I just wanted to recognize that. It's not really a report, but it is a month uh between Septem- September 15th and October 15th, what a lot of Latin American countries or Latin countries have their um Independence Day celebrations. So Mexico's was on Friday, and I know that a lot of other countries also have their Independence Day around around this time period. So I just want to re- recognize that. Okay, Vice Chair Hancock?
Yeah, it's always good fun to join in people's celebrations. Um, I, last weekend, there was the uh creek cleanup and uh my wife Jenny organized most of it, but I joined in with the um doing the creek and um actually went down um to the uh the area that crosses with the Laguna de Santa Rosa and crosses under the Highway 101. Um, so we pulled up a lot of combination of of new garbage that was around there, because we've been doing this not re- not reliably every year, but every year we have been getting out there to some degree. And there's still a lot of um cans, there's a muffler that was thrown in there. We we and this was around the the Gravenstein Bridge, so we're really only wo- loo- working on from the pedestrian bridge just south of East Qatari, north of East Qatari, um down to the bridge, down to Highway 101 Commerce Avenue. So there's still a lot of stuff that's going into the creek. Um, in the end, it was probably about 10 bins worth of stuff if it could have all been ca- caught into that, but there are people who are living at the north end of the the um the bicycle path. And I I guess, you know, that's something that SAFE can be involved in. Did find a tent that was right under the middle of Highway 101. Um, so there's a, the 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 channels in there are about 15 feet wide by 10 feet tall. Um, we left that, we didn't, you know, it looked like it was somebody there. And I I also identified that to s- to the to the dispatcher, Qatari dispatcher, and hopefully they passed it on to the SAFE group. Um, but there was a lot of stuff that came up. We had about 15 people that joined out there, including our neighbors who've got triplets, they're about 16 years old, so they were there. And I think the youngest was about probably four years old who came out for a bit. I don't actually know whether he made it. His parents came out, but he might have made it for a short period of time. So it was a good three hours of work in the creek with about 15 people from all over.
Thank you so much. Okay, so no other reports? Uh, we'll go to staff and see, is there any items received after the agenda was posted today?
No items were received after posting.
Okay, okay, so with that, then we'll adjourn the meeting for today and thank everybody for being here.
All right.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.